If you call the meeting to order, please stand and pledge allegiance.
Hello, Mary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Just a note on the agenda. As we went into executive session, an additional item was put under number seven. The item is entitled "Agency Reference 1415-08," so I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised against Park Press. Issue November 21, 2014, all municipal clerks of townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been notified and requirements of posting of notices have been met. Okay, next up, we have applications, and we have board report, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. So, a number of items. First and foremost, we are down two board members this evening. Mr. Bruno and Mrs. Terra have both been stricken by the flu, and it's been a long road this winter for those of you who've, if it's swept through your household, you know what I'm talking about. Couple items. Tonight, actually, we have two teams competing in the state championship while we're here. So, we have the Freehold Township High School Boys Basketball Team playing for state championship presently as we're sitting here. It's 30 to 29. The other folks at halftime. And we have the Howell High School Hockey Team playing for state championship this evening as well. So, we do have two teams that are competing for state championship this evening, so we wish them all the best of luck. Last week, the district did receive word from the International Baccalaureate Organization that we have been authorized to begin offering IB courses to juniors next school year. That completes a, close to a three-year process, and we're proud of that. It, you know, contained many site visits, outside training, following up with other folks. It was, it was a ton of work by a lot of people in the district to bring that to bear, and so we're happy to report that to the board this evening, that IB authorization, which was a specific goal within our strategic plan, has been achieved. Park testing update. As those of you who followed the past week or so know that across the state of New Jersey, park testing did begin for most schools last school week. From a technological standpoint, it's been largely very smooth sailing for us. I think the decision to utilize desktops for our students has been rewarded. We have not had the glitches that we've heard about in some other districts with mobile devices. So, from a technological standpoint and from an implementation standpoint, logistically, it has gone as well as we could hope for. And, again, that is behind an awful lot of work by a number of individuals, particularly in the buildings, the assistant principals, the guidance department, the guidance supervisors. Those folks have worked diligently to make sure that it did go off smoothly for us. As a school district, we are up to about 1,300 refusals at this point in time, which represents roughly 16.25 percent of our test-taking population. So, what that data may look like when it comes back to us will be very interesting. Obviously, if you pull 16 percent out of your sample size, that, that will create some difficulties in terms of what, what the interpretations we might draw from that data. We've advocated for some changes in the process as the state implements this. You know, from a managerial standpoint, keeping track of the refusals and the type of form that we have to report on was extremely labor-intensive. The state has provided us another pathway to report those refusals, to cut down on the clerical hours needed to keep track of that. We'll see how the testing goes as we move forward. The interruption is not as significant with the language arts because, as you know, language arts are grade-specific. So, ninth graders are in English I, 10th graders are in English II. That's much easier to manage than the mathematics courses where there are a wide range of student grades represented within a particular class. So, the disruption ends up being a bit more significant. The jury's still out. We said that we would monitor the situation closely, keep track of the impact instructional time, keep track diligently of other issues that arise. And when we come out of the testing session, I'll certainly report out publicly once again. But at this point in time, from a logistical standpoint, it is, all systems go with minimal interruptions for us. From a practical standpoint, it is incredibly time-consuming for the school district these past, this past week or so. Our various school productions are underway throughout the districts, the musicals. I would encourage folks to come out. We have so many talented students across the district. I made it to Manalapan's presentation of Seussical. I missed some other presentations, and I'm trying to get out and bout, but there are a number of presentation, a number of performances that are, that are underway. The district produced as a result of our invitation to the Connect Ed Summit at the White House this past November. We did produce a, a video that captures some of the ways in which we believe we're future-ready as a school district. It highlights several of our programs and, and a number of the students across the district and, and really, I think, highlights our philosophy about providing pathways for students to pursue their passions, whatever those passions may be. That'll be up on our website shortly. I think we posted it to Facebook. Thanks, Rebecca. We also had the good fortune to host a site visit from Livingston High School last week. They spent the day at Freehold High School. They're very interested in our magnet programs here in the district, so they wanted to come down and see a number of our, you know, our Computer Science Academy, our Medical Sciences Learning Center, our Culinary Academy. So, they spent the day with us. That was some nice collaboration because we did travel to Livingston High School this past summer to look at how they had implemented their block scheduling. And in the process of that visit, the administration there was asking us a lot of questions about our magnet programs, and so they then said, hey, can we come down and see some for ourselves? And so, that was a, a little collegiality there. Our executive student cabinet met last week, and the students went through the draft goals for our middle states process. And they also went through some of the survey responses and responded to questions that we had sent out on a, on a survey. We've gotten somewhere around 5,000 responses with the middle state survey, and that's faculty, staff, students, parents, community members. And so, we really wanted the students to spend some time reflecting on potential goals, and, and the students were fantastic. They gave us a, a ton of feedback from a student perspective. And the, the student cabinet will be later this week traveling to Center State Hospital with Dr. Hazel, Dr. Moore, to talk about, explore some of the Center State programs, talk about other ways that students might get involved, become more involved with Center State opportunities for stu, our students there. It's something, you know, we have a very, very positive relationship with Center State, and they're looking to provide more student opportunities. We're looking to try and get more students involved, so it's, it's a win-win for everybody. And Dr. Hazel will be leading the field trip there for, I think it's Friday?
It's Friday.
And finally, this evening, and we'll talk more about it in a little momentarily, but Mr. Boyce will give an overview of the adoption of the tentative budget, which is a bit, a bit perfunctory as the final budget will be adopted in April by the board, and there'll be certainly much more public discussion about that budget at that point in time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Yep, one other note. The school calendar will be, there will be a slight change. Thank you, Mr. Boyce, for reminding me of that, and I did forget, as I said I would. Some of those prom dates will change on the calendar that we're adopting tonight that's up there. So, we realized that there was a conflict with a religious holiday from one of the buildings, so some of those dates will change.
Especially two of them.
Two of the buildings. So, some of those dates will change, but the, the construct of the calendar itself, the days off, and those will not change. Thank you.
Mr. Sampson, could you also alert everyone to the makeup day for this school year, 22nd?
Thank you. Yeah, so the, we've used up our four snow, our three snow days, and we went into a fourth as a result of the lovely weather we've had. So, our makeup day, our last, our built-in day that we take back at this point in time is the Friday prior to Memorial Day, which I believe is Friday, May 22nd. So, that will be a full day of school for all students. I'm sure you're happy to hear that in the back.
We'll be really excited to work on that day.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Okay, board reports. We have our first curriculum and instruction.
Okay. We met prior to this meeting tonight, and essentially, you'll see on the agenda for tonight, there are resolutions there for summer programs. We have a good number of students who participate. And we also discussed what was fee-based and what wasn't. We talked about enrollment for summer programs already starting, and actually, there's a link for our summer academy on the front page of the website now. We also discussed the admissions process for the learning centers and academies. I believe all the decisions there went out on February 20th, and we spent time going over the timeline on how in eighth grade it goes about applying this year, or actually, I think it was last year, it was last year, 700. Was it this year or last year that 700 students took the exam? Okay, this year, because all the reports we were looking at were last year's numbers. And we went over the admissions process, and we received and went over a magnet program application yield, which showed us the breakdown of all the applications and acceptances. And we got a thorough review of each magnet program's admissions data, such as how many students applied and how many accepted offers of admission. And this report also consisted of parents' feedback. And finally, there were some tweaks in the program, a study in the Medical Sciences Learning Center that we went over at the end of the meeting. And I saw how rigorous it was, and I thought of Mary Ann, because she had to go through it.
That's right.
And that was really what happened tonight.
Just to dovetail on that, Mr. Messinger, with the, one of the things that we have explored is how do we more, even more effectively communicate sort of the status of those acceptances over time? And I know that's something that Dr. Moore's office is looking into for improvements that we can continue to make for subsequent years. We do update it regularly, but as you can imagine, you know, students and parents are stressed out and, and sort of very concerned over the admissions process, and so we want to try and even provide even more real-time data with sort of a snapshot of where you might land, you know, what, you know, so parent can get a gauge of the likelihood of students' acceptance into a program as we do have wait lists. Office of CNI does talk to parents who call and have those questions, and they can provide information such as, you know, typically, we, we accept down to this breaking point, your child has, it looks like they have a good opportunity there, but we can't, we can't obviously definitively pin that down. But we are trying to revise our process using technology as much as possible to provide real-time data to parents while that process is unfolding for next year.
Can I have a, I have a question, please. When is the county magnet specialized learning centers? I mean, you're in line with them, obviously. You have to be, right? When their acceptances are? Monmouth County?
Yeah, I think their, their acceptances are going out this, this week. We might be a week.
Oh, so they're basically, the people, the parents or the students have to wait to see if they have accepted there. So, when do we have, when do they have to, can they decide? Or what do you, is, are you, they have up till after these acceptances are come out, right, for the county, obviously, right?
Right, and what we'll see.
They do when things, I mean, it's a fluid process, and it does change, you know, but we do ask, you know, for them to commit to our program, but things do change, and sometimes we then go into a wait list.
Oh, so if they come in and then they get accepted and allied or whatever?
Potentially.
They could check, they'll just say whatever their choice is. Okay, very good.
All right. Next up is policy.
Our policy did not meet.
It did meet.
And Michael, you're back up, finance?
Yes, we had a meeting on, we had a meeting on February 27th, and we, since Governor Christie's budget came out, which proposed flat state aid, we briefly discussed the state budgeting process towards education. Then we also talked about bid results. Tonight, there are recommendations on the agenda. The Manalapan track work we talked about, and that continues on. With respect to bids, you'll see on the agenda, we took bids on the four remaining roof projects. We got a lot of bids, and you'll see that tonight, we're awarding partial roof replacements for Howell, Colts Neck, Manalapan, and Freehold Township. Of course, we've spoken in the past about existing work being done at Marlboro and Freehold Borough. Marlboro's 98 percent done. There's still more work to do at Borough. With respect to HVAC, we talked about the process there, and we took in a bunch of bids, and unfortunately, if you look at I-2 of the agenda, they're all going to be rejected. Moving on to the water system at Colts Neck, we're basically spending money on maintaining and upgrading the systems there. Of course, we partnered with Freehold Township Municipal Officials to look at that system. Bids came in back on that, that work, so you'll see, we're awarding tonight a contract for that to A.C. Schultz, and we should be in good shape for the next four to five years. And then finally, with respect to food service, obviously, we had a new food service company come in this year. At the finance committee meeting, we reviewed how that's going. Our sales are strong, and next month, we're going to have to make a decision for next year. But everything with respect to food service appears to be going well right now, and that was it.
Thank you, Michael. Next up, we have a public hearing.
Yeah, so a, a couple of comments on this and for the public. A little over a year ago, the board will recall that we set off on our energy-based capital program that had several phases in it. The phase that we're approaching now is what Mr. Messinger just touched on, roof projects at four of our high schools, to supplement the two roof projects that were part of the original phase. So, this portion of the project was eligible for state funding. We made those applications over the course of the last year successfully, and the local share of the funding is, this is, will be financed, and therefore, there needs to be a public hearing, an opportunity for the, the public to ask any questions or understand that. It's consistent with the program that we first envisioned and discussed with the board, like I said, a little more than a year ago. So, we're moving along according to plan. This is one of the required formalities. The board will consider awards of lease purchase financing at its next meeting, and then we'll have the financing in place to go ahead and, and begin those projects this summer. So, if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain them at this point. If not, and as long as the microphone is still in front of me, if I may, Mr. President,
Absolutely, Mr. Boyce.
Just make some additional comments on agenda items, and to supplement what Mr. Messinger said. The HVAC, and the HVAC piece is, is really the centerpiece of our energy program and our initial bid for boilers and temperature control systems. We had a fair amount of bidders, a fair amount of interest in that. Those bids came in. The lowest bidder, that contractor informed us that he had made an error and requested withdrawal, and we, we honored that. The second lowest did not have all the required documentation as part of his packet, so we had to disqualify that as well. The third was at a price that we feel we can do better. So, our course of action is to reject all bids, immediately go back out and accept bids, and the contractors that participated in the first round would hopefully, since they've done all of their work, participate in the second round as well. From a timing perspective, and you would imagine that you don't just pull boilers off a shelf somewhere, that they're, they're made to order, we have an item on the agenda here to establish another board meeting, March 30th. The purpose of that board meeting is to give an opportunity to award bids received and providing that they are within budget in acceptable form, in time for that process to get underway, so that we are able to do that work during the summertime or during the non-heating season, really. So, just a couple of comments on that. And finally, as Mr. Sampson had mentioned, the tentative budget is, is on the agenda for tonight, and as is the case in the past, the, the school districts need to authorize the submission of the tentative budget to the State Department of Education through their Monmouth County office. As you would expect, the state budget law has many requirements, technical requirements in order for it to be, in order to be considered by the board. This initiates that process. Our current framework of the budget, as was mentioned earlier, includes state aid, flat state aid, and that's one of really the three primary players on the revenue side of a budget. Surplus is also another one, and that's something that we approach with really a multi-year view, and managing our surplus for consistency over the years, and so we do that in a very thoughtful way. And finally, property tax. Our current model includes, it's within the budget cap framework, it does access some of the deferred cap available in the past, and as will be further discussed on April 27th at the public hearing for the budget, you know, the board has, since the inception of the budget cap law, cap on the tax levy increase, you know, has taken a very conservative approach to that and has passed on many millions of taxpayer dollars. And we did that for taking into consideration all of the stakeholders involved, so I wanted to make note of that. The preliminary assessed value numbers, and this is important when it comes to everybody's home budget, the good news is that assessed values are up, better than 5 percent at this point. Those are preliminary numbers, and we expect to bring in a budget that has tax impact in a modest range, one way or the other, although we do expect the majority of our towns to see a, a property tax decrease in their rate. So, that, that's where we're working with that. On the revenue side, on the appropriation side, which is where much of the debate, internal debate happens, of where to best deploy the dollars that are available, that is ongoing and will continue to be ongoing, and it will culminate with the public hearing on April 27th. A couple items, a couple of notes on the agenda, other items on the agenda. Correction on G4, change of status. Remove the change of status for the following staff member, Michelle Lobiato. Close enough? Okay, so if you could make that note on your agenda. Also, J11, if you could remove settlement agreement 1415-08. And finally, an addendum, one additional item, G10, approval of memorandum of agreement, and I'll read it here, be resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education adopts and approves the tentative memorandum of agreement with the Freehold Regional High School District Supervisors of Extracurricular Activities Association for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2019. And those are the changes for the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Next up, we have public participation. We have one person signed up, and that's Joe DeBella. Is that right?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Sampson, board members. I'm Joseph DeBella, Howell Township resident. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. Came when I recognized that there was a meeting this evening, coincidentally the timing works. My son Nicholas is a freshman at Colts Neck. He's having a terrific experience as a senior principal there. Does a fantastic job. The challenge that we had is he's a lacrosse player, he's a freshman lacrosse player, and there seems to be an issue with respect to the policy for equipment that, in my estimation, probably needs to be brought to the attention of the district's leadership and the board specifically. I come to you not out of disrespect to the principal, but I served as mayor of Howell for four years, I've worked with this board in the past, and I understand how policy gets done. And so, the issue of question, in my judgment, is one of policy. I wrote an email over the weekend, I sent it to you, Ms. Frank Hauser, as our representative, and also to Mr. Sampson. The issue is that we had a parents' meeting prior to the season beginning, and we were told that it was recommended that the boys use their own helmets. In fact, I had an email from the coach of a high school that I want to read and share with you with respect to this issue. If you want to use your own equipment, especially helmets, which I strongly recommend, you must donate it to the school by filling out the attached form and bringing it to Mr. Arnejo as soon as possible. That's fine. I, I understand, I've been involved in, in public office. You can't buy enough equipment for everyone, not a problem. So, that's what we were told to do, went out and bought the best, safest helmet. My son has many helmets. He plays on travel lacrosse teams, but it needed to accommodate the district's color scheme. So, we went out at the recommendation, spent $260 of what helped. I happened to have with me the form that the high school provided to us, Freehold Regional High School District gift donation form to be supplied. We were mildly concerned that we would have to pay for our own equipment. You're a catcher in a baseball team, you probably get shin guards and a catcher's glove, maybe a school supplies the bats, but certainly, most of the equipment is provided. My son played, freshman football, he was given all the necessary equipment. If we needed to buy the equipment for his safety, we would have done that. Not long ago, we were told it was a change in the policy, and now you needed to use the equipment that the district was going to supply. And we all are very keenly aware of the difficulty with this particular sport, head-on-head collisions that are unavoidable, neck, spine injuries, concussions and the like. My son happens to wear other equipment, suffered a concussion, not anything to do with the school privately, wears the best equipment, still had a concussion, it happens. So, we were anxious to see the kind of equipment that we were supplying. Unfortunately, I can pass this around, my son was given a 2009 helmet manufactured in the year 2009. It's not been used. However, according to the manufacturer's requirements, the helmet must be recertified every three years, and there should be a sticker on the helmet indicating that it was certified. There is no such sticker. Now, my son's 15 years old, he wants to coach the Lycos. He's told to wear this helmet, he's been to wear the helmet. He came home today, explained to my wife and I that he was given this particular helmet. We expect that there's no sticker on concern. It was a practice, so obviously, this was the first time that they were using these particular pieces of equipment. Another parent that we spoke to this evening was told, they spoke to, it's an acronym, you'll have to forgive me, someone who's sort of an ombudsman at the high school for athletics, and I forget what the acronym is, the acronym rather, but was told, this particular parent was told that they bought 70 helmets, brand-new helmets this year, 70. Unfortunately, there's enough helmets for players who are on the junior varsity, the varsity team, but not enough for freshmen. So, while they had extra new helmets to distribute, there were not enough for all of the freshmen. So, it was too difficult to determine which freshman would get a new helmet. So, rather than deploy the remaining new helmets, apparently, none of them was deployed. So, my concern is what appears to be a disconnect with respect to the district's policy, particularly in a sport where there is substantial opportunity for there to be very serious injury. What the manufacturers suggest, and I have literature I can share with you, that after three years, these equipments, or these helmets, rather, should be discarded entirely after three years. They should be discarded entirely, simply because of the normal wear and tear. You cannot continue to recertify it, whether it is the constant banging of the equipment, whether it is the difficulty from the weather and the environment in general. So, my concern is that we had originally been told you can use your own if you donate it to the district. We go out, we buy the equipment, we're prepared to donate it, then we're told, no, you've got to use the equipment we provide. I'm perfectly fine with that, so long as Nicholas has a, a piece of equipment that's safe to use. Though many of you are parents, I can't imagine you would let your son or daughter play with a piece of equipment, particularly one they wear on their head, that was not up to the safest standards reasonably available. And in this situation, that certainly is not the case. So, apparently, there's been some disconnect at the high school. The principal was not aware of this, one of the parents spoke to him. The athletic director may be, some of the... This is an issue of policy, and one in our estimation that needs to be clarified. I brought the form, it apparently does need to be signed off and approved by the Board of Education, needs to indicate the date of the vote, and it needs the signature of the business administrator. So I'm happy to give this form to you, it's been filled out, we will donate our piece of equipment, so long as my son can wear it and wear it safely, and he's got practice again tomorrow. So I, I'm sure, Mr. Sampson, you've not had a chance to see my email, I put in there some recommendations for clarification with respect to policy, but you can appreciate as a parent, my concern for the safety of my son, and certainly for the other boys who were also given other helmets identical to the one my son was given, which is simply not safe to use.
I apologize, I have not, I don't, I don't know if your email was not routed to me. Sometimes it goes, when you click the superintendent box, it will go, I don't.
No, I backed into what your email address was, and I, I forget the extension, Tejah Hui, the address is sent to, I'm sure Ms. Frank Hauser, if you had gotten mine as well, I sent it to c.sampson@frhsd.com.
That's me, yeah. I didn't.
It was yesterday in the morning. I, I have a, I'll leave you with a printed copy, Mr. Sampson.
No, I, I don't doubt that you sent, so it's the first that this issue's being brought to my attention, certainly, at this very moment, so we're certainly not going to put expired helmets on the heads of kids in this school district, so I'll, I'll look into that when this meeting adjourns, probably within about 12 seconds. And then I'm certain, you know, we'll, we'll communicate with the parent group through the building principal as to, as to next steps. I, I have to, I have to, I have to look into the issue in a little bit more depth before I can even understand sort of the, the parameters of what, what, what we're, what we're dealing with presently.
I appreciate how the process works, and I know that you've got to do your due diligence. My concern was it probably had not been estimated, and quite frankly, David, there's a similar issue in Marlboro or in one of the other high schools around this issue. This may not be isolated just at Colts Neck.
I sure hope not, but you know, it's the first time that it's, I, I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow directly.
Yeah, my daytime number is in there, and if I may, since I'm here, since you need to act on it anyway, I don't know if this still is the approved policy of donating the equipment. We were told if you donate it, you'll get it back at some point at the end of the season.
That's what I was going to ask you.
You're donating it for the year, apparently.
Donating it for your child to wear it for the year. I thought you, you had to donate something you purchased for the next season for another child. That's not it?
No.
Okay, that's what I don't understand what that means.
It was concerning about when we would get it back, and when we see it back in time for some of the travel teams that they're quite on. Because it's not an inexpensive helmet to buy multiple. We're fine with the policy. I understand entirely the liability issue, the age of wear of say helmets, I'm just not comfortable with a parent, with him, using the one, and my wife and I told him, don't wear that helmet again. You're going to wear your helmet, and if there's an issue, you know, then call mom or I, and we'll come over to the school. He's very embarrassed and didn't even want me to come speak about it, because he doesn't want to have any trouble, but he's still not understanding it, and ahead to me.
Someone will want to.
He'll thank you later.
Can I leave you with?
Absolutely. If I, if I just, what, the form that you have there isn't specific to equipment, and the purpose of it is mainly notification and recognition, and then a thank you letter after that, so, and that comes up through the building principal, so you can go ahead with that course, and you know, it'll, it'll make its way onto the agenda from there.
Do you have a time, if, if it takes a little bit of time to go through the process?
It's not a matter of approval, as I said, it's a matter of notification and, and then recog, subsequent recognition.
So as long as, if, if, we actually submitted it once before.
Are you talking about the gift and donation?
Yeah.
Okay.
We submitted the form previously, but there was no record of it being received.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the protocol in that building at that, you know, how they manage that, so, again, the building administration would be able to help you with that.
The date of the Board of Education approval and the signature of their student's.
Yes, and as to the notification and recognition on the agenda.
So in terms of him wearing, in case there's some delay tomorrow, if I.
There won't be a delay.
There will not be a delay tomorrow.
It won't be a problem.
That I can guarantee you.
I appreciate you having the opportunity. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Mr. DeBella, I just wanted to apologize. I've been away from my computer Sunday and today, and Mr. Sampson, I have not seen email, and I don't have a fancy enough phone that it's, comes on my, on my cellphone, but I'll definitely look into it and apologize.
And welcome back, haven't seen you in a while. I'm sorry.
Mr. DeBella, I, I just want to let you know that, you know, we take this very seriously, and this will be taken care of, I guarantee.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have the agenda, and like taking it one shot, it goes from G1 to K4. So we need a, a motion.
Inclusive of what I mentioned earlier.
Inclusive of everything that Mr. Boyd's mentioned as well. Do we have a motion? Second. Okay. Discussion?
I would just like to say pertaining to G1, it's very bittersweet for me, because Peggy Dever is on there, and she was actually my freshman math teacher, and she's really essentially the last teacher at Marlboro High School who was there when I was there, so.
Wow.
I'm extremely sad to be voting on this and her having resigned, but after 44 years, it's, I guess, yeah, she's had enough.
I, I have a comment, but I'll save it for our new business. Okay.
Wow, 44 years.
Discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
We can't leave Steve on the news.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next we have, we have old business? Any old business?
It's new business. I have one point of new business, I can't let this go. It is imperative that the Board of Education and the administrators of this district recognize not only the work, but the effort that goes into teaching, and I know that Mr. Sampson and almost all the administrators, I assume, were teachers at one time, to teach for four decades.
I know.
And give service to this district is just an incredible thing. I don't ever, as long as I'm on the board, I don't ever want a teacher in this district to feel underappreciated or not valued. And I can't tell you how bittersweet it is for me to see my good friend, Mr. Kova, retire after 42 years. I had the pleasure of teaching across the hall from him for 35 years, and he was one of the best teachers I have ever seen. It was sad when he got to be a supervisor, because I knew he was taken out of the class and wasn't going to teach anymore, and I know that bothered him. And that's one of the sad things about supervisors, is that some of them don't get to teach.
Is he still mad at me?
Uh, no, no, no. I will speak for him on that. But I just want to say that I know this district will miss him. The amazing thing about a teacher is no matter how good you are, the one thing to remember is in four years, no one in that school who was a student will know who the hell you are. And so that's, that's a very sobering thought.
Yep.
But anyway, I just wanted to thank not only Michael's teacher, Ms. Dever, but Mr. Kova for their service in this district.
And I was very proud for him to be in Howell for his period of time he stepped up.
You guys are very lucky to get him.
I know. And how are you going to replace him in Howell, is the question.
That should be something that should be addressed to other people.
Stan always said that the sun always shines at Howell High School.
Yes.
And I emailed him and said, the day you leave, the sun won't be shining.
No.
That's true.
He really enjoyed it there.
If you do want to see Mr. Kova, our, our website for singing is open this summer.
I know. We're definitely going to be checking it out.
That brings us to, Jermaine, we have a motion for Jermaine.
Motion.
Motion? Liz, Liz, you're.
She loves to do that.
We have a second?
It's all yours.
Second. Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, shall you say, those that were in, by the way, final rose tonight.